Conduct in the City Council Chambers, Rules of Decorum for the Public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, April 16, 2024. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org. They may also be made by phone to the City Clerk's office at 661-763-1222. All comments, all public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and any comments received will be read into the record. We'll begin this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilman Ronnie Waldrop, followed by an invocation by Pastor Joey Pittman, if you would join us all, please.
Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let's bow our heads. God, we have prayed for our police officers, for their safety, for our fire department, for our schools. God, I think one of the things we need more than anything else is actually you. Your peace, your grace, a spiritual awakening in our community. God, we know Taft is an incredible place, but God, we need that peace in our homes. So we just pray your covering, your grace, and your mercy, in Jesus's name, everybody say, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Joe.
Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
And Councilmember Chavera.
Here.
Okay, since the people receiving a certificate for item number one aren't here yet, what we're gonna do is we're gonna swap places. We're gonna go to item number two, if that's all right. And we'll begin with the proclamations, the first proclamation this evening being for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Mayor Protem Cryer, if you would, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation declaring National Public Safety Telecommunication Week, April 14 through the 20th, 2024. Whereas National Public Safety Telecommunication Week was founded in honor the telecommunication personnel dedicating their lives to public safety. It was a local initiative that was initially set up in 1981 by Patricia Anderson of Costa Rica County, which later went on to become a nationwide week-long event. And whereas National Public Safety Telecommunication Week is celebrated each year during the second full week of April to coincide with 9/11 Educational Month. And whereas emergencies can occur at any time that requires police, fire, or emergency medical service. Whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality, accuracy, and information obtained from the citizens who telephoned 9/11. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public service, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job over the years. Now therefore, that the City Council of the City of TAF recognizes and extends appreciation to our dedicated and skilled dispatchers, hereby proclaim the week of April 14 through the 20th, 2024, as Public Safety Telecommunication Week in the City of TAF, designed by the Mayor Nor and four council members.
All right, do we have some people representing that select group, chief?
We do. Tanya, Yahira, Shannon. Yahira is our new dispatcher, which was spoken about with Les Clark last council meeting, and we stole her from there. We actually didn't steal her. She jumped ship and came with us after she went to Cal State and graduated. So we are very happy to have her onboard. Of course, this is Tanya, we all know Tanya, and Shannon. And to kind of talk about what Orchard was speaking about, it's vital to have our dispatchers recognized because what they do for the officers in the field is imperative. They're basically the brain trust of our department, information coming in and information going out, providing information, location, the hazards that they have are all provided by these ladies here, and there's others, but of course, they couldn't because they have to work. But they actually run our show, they really do. And I'm very proud that they're here and very proud that they're accepting this proclamation from the, from you guys.
All right. Thank you very much. You know, it's, the other thing is that you're that, you're that link, you're that first link in between somebody in trouble, somebody in need, somebody in panic. And so the way you handle things on that phone, the calmness, professionalism in your voice has a great deal to do with how things end up. So I've talked to many people who have had to call, you know, dispatch, call 911, and that voice on the other end of that phone has a lot to do with how things end up. So I personally thank you as well for all you all do. It is critical and it is greatly appreciated.
Yeah, Yahira's prepared a speech.
Excellent. Right on, jump on up here.
Oh, she changed her mind.
Yahira, what did you, what was your major?
Yes.
Nice, how fitting. And you're bilingual as well?
Yes.
Wonderful, wonderful, good. Again, I as well, thank you.
We're excited about that as well.
Absolutely. So Mayor Protem, you could go down there and get a picture and...
I'd like to invite the council, if I could come down.
All right, yeah. So we don't have to present the big old check because nobody spoke.
We didn't, we didn't, wait a minute, we didn't get the check? Because...
Come on down here, gentlemen.
Oh, we're in trouble.
We'll get behind, ladies in front.
Thank you.
That includes Josh and Bruce.
Sure.
Two of them.
Yeah.
All right, we're on everybody.
Well, good seeing you.
We're right in the beginning.
Yes, really do that one law.
All right. Ladies, you're up front, it's your week. Full loss of eight and four be attached. Come on in.
There you are.
You're the important one.
One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you, yeah. Very nice.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and finish the proclamations and then we'll get on to item number one. Next proclamation is about Give Big Kern Giving Day. This is a certificate of recognition declaring May the 7th, 2024 Giving Day. Whereas Kern Community Foundation is a charitable organization whose mission is growing community, growing philanthropy. And whereas Kern Community Foundation is a member of the TAF Chamber of Commerce, has 40 scholarships available for TAF students, and has placed 15 paid interns at the Westside Recreation Park District in the last year. And whereas Kern Community Foundation runs the annual fundraising event, Give Big Kern, a nonprofit strengthening initiative of the Kern Community Foundation, a charitable organization. And whereas Give Big Kern brings Kern County together as one community by helping Kern County nonprofits raise unrestricted dollars. It is 100% free to nonprofits, and in 2023, they raised a record-breaking $965,893. And whereas Give Big Kern's purpose is to raise funds and volunteer hours for local nonprofits through online crowdfunding. Matching gifts and pledge, the collaborative effort helps Kern County and the Westside's community-based organizations raise unrestricted resources while growing their visibility, capacity, and sustainability. And whereas donors realize that nonprofit organizations do important work throughout Kern County and the West Side, and with Give Big Kern, they're able to select a nonprofit to support as part of their giving process. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of TAF does hereby proclaim May the 7th, 2024, as Giving Day and encourages local giving through the annual Give Big Kern fundraiser. And I want to welcome Aaron Volk here because I requested that he come here. I will tell you, I'm gonna raise my hand and say, I did not know just how big a part of Give Big Kern the community of Taft was as a recipient, how fortunate we are to be a part of it. And I will tell you that before I put my signature on anything, I like to dig into it, and I like to know. So here we have Aaron coming all this way to talk to us. So Aaron, Mike's all yours, tell us all about it.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and City Council, and everybody who's here tonight. Kern Community Foundation is here because we serve Kern County. We manage about $40 million in charitable endowments, and it's all money that's to be granted out locally. So it's in our interest to make sure that there are strong, capable nonprofit organizations all across Kern County that can do the maximum impact with the amount of dollars that we're able to grant out to them as we go. Give Big Kern has, since 2016, has raised millions of dollars from thousands of donors for hundreds of local nonprofits. And the reason I'm here tonight is because I would like more of that money to be coming to organizations that are in Taft and serve Taft. I'm here tonight because I'm from southwest Bakersfield, I have friends in Taft, I've spent a lot of time in Taft, I worked for Kevin McCarthy for five years in Taft. Frankly, I like you guys.
And we like you too, Aaron.
I support the energy industry, I'm the only community foundation in the state that supports the energy industry. Taft is a gem, we need to protect Taft. And knowing what we know, that help is not coming from Sacramento, help is not coming from LA, help is generally not coming from DC, we have to take care of this ourselves. And so my hope is that we can grow the amount of interactions that we have with the City of Taft and the greater Taft area through Give Big Kern with some recognition from the city. And I see this as the beginning of a multi-year effort to really grow what our nonprofits can do here to meet the needs of citizens in Taft and the greater Taft area. And so that's why I came here tonight to ask for the proclamation. This is step one of what I hope is a long journey together.
All right, thank you very much. And actually, you have paid it forward, so to speak. You have already helped placing students in paid positions and several other things. So you paid it forward, we appreciate it, and we recognize that. And what you had to say about the community, you're right, you've been a part of this community along with Kevin McCarthy for a great many years. And you're a familiar face, and we love a good smile in the community of TAF. So welcome aboard. I'm gonna bring this down to you.
Yeah.
I can see everybody else in here. Goosebumps, couldn't believe.
I seen you shaking a whole ton of your shoulders, is it okay?
I don't know why they have it so high for.
This is the team that you...
Or they turn down, you think?
Okay. Good. You still up?
Don't say that too loud.
One, two, three. Okay.
Thanks, Craig.
Appreciate your friendship, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support and friendship.
Especially on the receiving end of this, usually I'm handing these out.
Yeah, you can have it out on me. Sign it in front of a check instead of the back.
Appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Great to see you.
All right, next up, item number one, Certificate of Recognition Felix and Sherry Bravo. Councilman... Councilman Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my distinct honor and privilege to read and present this plaque, not only on behalf of the City Council, the City of TAF, but of everybody at the City of TAF and everybody on the West Side. The certificate recognizes Felix and Sherry Bravo in celebration of their decades of successful business ownership in the City of Taft. Whereas Felix and Sherry Bravo have owned and operated the Local Pizza Factory franchise in the City of Taft for more than three decades. And whereas the Bravos began their business in a small building on Kern Street in 1990, and in 2006, they purchased a larger building on Center Street that truly revitalized the downtown Taft area. Whereas through their business, the Bravo family has employed, mentored, coached, and supported hundreds of local employees, many being local youth entering the workforce for the first time. And whereas Pizza Factory Taft and the Bravo family has given tens of thousands of dollars in cash to local groups in support of their nonprofit, excuse me, in support of their nonprofit fundraising efforts, with countless additional donations being made in kind to various local causes. And whereas Pizza Factory has become a staple of locals' dietary routines by standing out from their chain options, other chain options in the area, serving as an anchor to the downtown Taft area, as a preferred meeting place for friends, families, business leaders, and everything in between, due to their outstanding food and welcoming atmosphere. And whereas Felix and Sherry Bravo have decided to move into the next chapter of their lives after 33 years of faithfully and lovingly serving Taft and the West Side through their business venture. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Taft, oh, excuse me, now therefore, the City Council, on behalf of the citizens of the community and all city employees, take great pleasure in recognizing Felix and Sherry Bravo as both dedicated and valued business owners and members of the community, and extend our best wishes for their future endeavors. Signed on behalf of the Mayor and the Council, thank you guys very, very much.
We all get to be in this picture. If you've never eaten pizza there, you don't get to be in the picture.
Oh, shoot.
I don't think anybody in town will not be in this picture.
Something does here, but...
Congratulations.
You're so lucky.
I'll let you guys hold this up front, and I'll give you guys a bunch more done.
Everybody getting lined up as well.
I got it.
One, two, three.
Get up there.
Yep.
I'm dressed up for press.
Okay, so what we doing, we spinning around here, exactly. Here we go.
Get it up in here.
Here we go.
Craig, is it...
We're trying.
We all worried someday.
Someday.
You're in there just three, four days going out, and you're still better than tired.
Cade, where you going? Where's Cade going?
Oh, he's back.
Can we come back in? Hey, I just want to recognize, Cade, we got a special guest. This is one of our current service members in the United States Air Force. Thanks for coming down, buddy, and thanks for your service.
Hey, and if Bo's watching somewhere out there in TV land, we didn't forget about your brother.
All right, next up, item number three, Citizens Request Public Comments. Comments are to be received as stated in the above policy. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to whatever. We have one special individual, Dr. Kathy Warren, wishing to address the council this evening.
Is it Thelma or Louise tonight?
You know, I... I can't remember, we have Thelma and Louise hats, and I can't remember what, I don't see it when I'm wearing it, so... Okay, now you're all gonna wonder about that. I'm so glad that I have carte blanche to speak forever, how nice of you, Mayor Nor, I appreciate that. This will be short, however. I want to begin by saying thank you very much to you for your support of the Chamber of Commerce. Many people don't realize that our TOT tax helps our chamber because part of our mission is to make sure people know that Taft exists and that we have fun here. So a lot of our events are designed to get people to come from places other than Taft to come and enjoy Taft. And we are good at that, I'd like to think, and it's a pleasure to meet people and have them walk away and say, this is the friendliest town I have ever been to. And we hear that a lot. So it's a pleasure to meet people from other places, and it's wonderful to be supported by you through the TOT tax, so thank you for that. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on some things that are going on. It's Hall of Fame Weekend this weekend, and that is the Taft Union High School Hall of Fame, and we will be inducting three people into the Hall of Fame. The beginning of the Hall of Fame is Friday Night Mixer at the Best Western Plus, and that will, it's designed to welcome people, because most people who come to Taft will stay at the Best Western. And it's become kind of a, actually now it's growing because Carlos does the refreshments. They're beginning to overshadow the rest of the weekend. So we had the entire Police Department and Sheriff's Department join us last year because they could smell the food being barbecued in the parking lot, so I'm just saying. That happens at 7 o'clock, and it's a wonderful time for people to get together. These are people that have graduated, all of the people that have graduated this year, all the people that have graduated in the 60s are, I'm saying this wrong every time, we have three people that are being inducted, and all three people graduated in the 60s. Okay, that's the part I really want, would you edit out the other, yeah, I appreciate that. Okay. So being brought into or inducted into the Hall of Fame this year is Gail McNeil Schuck, who came to the City Council to replace her father when he was too ill to finish out his term, and she eventually, through elections and so forth, became Mayor of Taft. She's the only mayor of Taft that has been female, so she will be inducted into the Hall of Fame. Also, John Wigan, who is John Wigan, M.D., will be inducted. He is a class of 1966, and he will be inducted for his work as a teaching doctor, and also as someone who drops everything and goes to Haiti, or the Dominican Republic, or wherever he's needed to help when there is a disaster. He's a great human being, I happen to know him very well, a nice man. And then the last person is Dennis Falke, class of 1963, and he will be inducted, and many of you will remember him as being an outstanding athlete. He also returned to Taft to take over the rec department, and then afterwards took over the cemetery district. So he's had quite a different administrative career. So those people are being inducted. We start on, like I said, on Friday night with the mixer. Saturday morning, we will have a continental breakfast in the high school quad, and then the folks will be taking on those fabulous limousine golf carts that the high school has. You know what I'm talking, what are those called, Josh?
Jim carts, I think is the brand name.
Jim carts?
Yeah, it's an electric cart.
They're fabulous, they're fabulous. Anyway, people got as excited about those as they did the new buildings. So they'll be touring the high school, and then Saturday night, they'll be having a dinner and induction ceremony. So that is open to the public, and we are welcome, you are welcome to get tickets through the chamber. The following week is the State of the City Week, which is on Thursday, the 25th, and we will be hearing from Mayor Nor, Chief of Police, McMinn, thank you. I wasn't gonna say your whole name, but I had to pause to get Damon McMinn. And the third person talking will be a Kern County fireman, who is Division Chief for Kern County Fire, and his name is Corey, Kerry, excuse me, Kerry Wright. He will be talking, we got the, we polled people in the community to find out, what are the issues you kind of would like to know about, what's going on? And the things that came up were, we want to know more, how is crime compared to other communities? How is homelessness? Because we hear so much on the social media, and we hear so much on national media, how do we stack up against that? And the other thing was... Taft College, and we would love for you to be there, not only to help us raise money, but also to say goodbye to Brock. So those are the things that are utmost in our minds for this coming few weeks, and that's it. Anybody got a question? No?
Got a little car show thing going on here before too long.
Thank you. The car show, yes. It is May. See, I stopped thinking until we get to May. It is May 18th, and I'm so glad you asked about that. There is going to be a carnival going on at the same time the car show is going on, and I want to remind all car people, we won't let those grubby children with popcorn hands anywhere near your cars. I know that's always a concern, so there will be a section for the carnival and a section for the car show, and I'm hearing there will also be a parade that day. I'm looking around to see if anyone's confirming that. I think there will be a parade that day that will be just to signal the beginning of summer sports at the rec. So it's gonna be a big day, and usually when we have a lot of different things going on, everybody benefits by doing things together, so we hope that you will join us for that. If you have a car you want to enter, please do that. We have those entry forms online and we have them at the chamber. Thank you, Mayor Nor.
Yes, ma'am, my pleasure. Thank you very much. So many fun things going on, that's it. Spring is getting ready to sprung and time to get out and enjoy things. Okay. Next up, item number four, council statements, non-action. Mayor Protem Cryer, begin with you, sir.
Two in a row.
Two in a row.
Excellent. As you can know, there's lots going on in Taft. There's all kinds of activities happening, got some new businesses starting to open up here in Taft, and also we take pride in our citizens and our business people and our government officials, our police department, bar department, and our dispatchers and all those above, that we care in our community of all the people. That makes our great, our community a great place to live, and it just makes you, you know, proud that we're here, compared with other communities out there having all the issues and problems. Our problems are nothing compared to other cities, but we have a great community, and I'm proud of that. And there's things are, in the world part scene is that there's things are happening, you know, with the war going on in Israel, with Iran. It's, you hear people talking about their prophecies, like the world's gonna come to end and all the other things, but we've been saying that for, since time began about the end of the world, pretty much, but just pray, pray for our soldiers, pray for our country. Don't get in that position, and because it could change the things, you think prices are high now, wait till then, when gas, gas goes up to $10 a barrel and food is double what it is right now, because things can escalate pretty quick, our things, but for right now, that's all I have to say, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Councilman Waldrum.
I would like to mention that the lady that grew up in Taft, came here from Alabama, it's a repeat, Ann Haskins, graduated from high school, and since has wrote a book, Ten Lost Children, very good book. I just want to let everybody know that I'm down to the last box. Anybody's interested, come by 601 Kern Street and pick you one up, and I don't know if I'll be getting any more, but it's hard to put down. I'd like for you to come and get one. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Councilman Chavera.
Thank you, sir. So I'm just gonna piggyback off of councilmen here. The importance of local businesses, you know, they're the heart of our community, and it's super important that, that we continue to support and encourage our local businesses. They need us and we need them. Without them, we wouldn't have the community that we have. And I will leave you with two quotes regarding local businesses. When we support local businesses, we're supporting our neighbors, our friends, and our families. And finally, by shopping local, you are creating jobs, keeping money in the local economy, investing in entrepreneurship, and nurturing a sense of community. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Well said. Councilman Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's hard to do anything from the start there besides to say ditto to that. Anytime you spend money in your community, typically research shows that it turns over six, seven times within that community. And I know it's difficult sometimes to spend a little more than you might if you happen to make the trek 35, 40 miles east, but believe me, that makes a difference. Purchasing your gas here as opposed to driving to Bakersfield and purchasing gas while you're there makes a big difference. So those small little shifts can pay big dividends for our community, our size, especially, I mean, fuel's one of our largest producers, and so if you can bring some of that money here that you're not spending in Bakersfield, it will pay dividends, I can guarantee it. Mr. Mayor, since we don't meet again until the 7th of May, I wanted to highlight a couple happenings that are going on, and hopefully we can get folks out to attend and celebrate for whatever reason. On the 18th, so Thursday this week, we've got a home softball and baseball game. We host the Wasco Tigers. Big rivalry in both sports. Both games scheduled to start at 6:30. I'm not sure that there's a celebration planned on the softball side, but I know there is a baseball. So if you're, if you know a military veteran, or if you're a military veteran yourself, come on out to the ballgame. It's Military Appreciation Night, and that's all courtesy of the Taft Baseball Club, the Taft Union High School baseball team, and head coach Matt Davis. He does a fantastic job of highlighting those things, and he'd love nothing more than to see the stands filled with people, but most importantly, veterans that we can celebrate and hopefully bring home a nice W in front of. On the 19th, the day following, the softball club is hosting an alumni game, so if you're a Wildcats softball alum, you don't have to play. You're welcome to, I'm sure, and Arizona Pilgrim is kind of heading that up along with their mom, Tessa. So thank you to those ladies. One, if you have questions, please reach out to them, because I have zero information for you outside of, hey, come and support, but we'd love to see people out there supporting those who have dawned the blue and gold on the softball diamond, and if you're one of them, feel free to bring your glove and maybe some cleats and join them. On the 29th, which is the end of this month, it's a Monday, I think it's the last Monday of the month, Taft Union High School District hosts Honors Night every year. And we're fortunate, we're very blessed at the high school to facilitate the giving away of hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I didn't say $100, not $1,000, hundreds of thousands of dollars courtesy of various donors, some of which are from industry, some are from interest groups, and some are from local, I mean, what do you call them, alumni groups, class of 55, class of 63. I mean, there's a litany of folks who out there who recognize students and pay it forward because they've been in their shoes, whether it's a year ago or decades ago. I would encourage you guys to come out and, one, thank the people who do give, because it's a wonderful support to those kids who are recipients, and two, to honor the kids. I mean, this, we get to do this every year, and I would encourage folks at 6 o'clock, come to the Taft Eye Auditorium and help us recognize who are those kids who are being awarded on that night. Mr. Mayor, I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. So much going on. You know, I did not realize how far along we were in the, in the school year until the last mentoring session of the oil technology program. Dr. Warren's there shaking her head, she's a mentor in that program, and the way it is, is our lesson plans are in a binder, and I liked to, when I study and prepare for the, for our meeting, I look at the last two, and I look at the current one, and I also look at the next one, just to kind of roll it all together, and it seems to work. And I looked at the next one in our book, and you know what it said? Said, "Last meeting of the year." Last meeting of the year. Talk to the kids about what they're gonna do for summer, are they going to school, are they gonna have jobs? And I just thought, where did it go? That's right, right around the corner. Next thing you know, it's gonna be graduation, kids are gonna be out of school, and summertime is here, baby, so it's happening already. So very exciting, and we'll look forward to all those things going on. Another thing that I wanted to piggyback on was one of the things that Dr. Warren said about people asking about, fires. Fires are not a good thing. We just had our first semi-large grass fire the other day, and it started up on Honolulu Hills, and the fuel there, because of all the rain we've had, is, I don't know, 18 to 24 inches tall, and within the last two weeks, it started drying out just a little bit because of all the wind and the warmer winds, and the day of the fire, it was pushed by 25 to 30 mile an hour winds, and it was a race. It was a race. It was originally burning to the east and then it turned north and northeast, and then turned back a little bit, so every time they built a fire line, they were having to go in there and defend it. But I will tell you that the people who did that, the fire service did an outstanding job, brought that under control, because like I say, it was, it was trying to run away. So be careful out there. I mean, if you're gonna go out in the fields, and we have kids that go out there, they ride bikes all the time, and we're fortunate. Sometimes people are out there exercising their Second Amendment rights and doing a little target shooting with their grandsons, whatever the case may be, but also be cognizant of the fact that there's a lot of fuel on the hills around the city of Taft, and it just takes a spark, a little bit of wind, and next you know, we've got a very real problem. So we will later on be talking about fireworks and giving out permits, and we have somebody here who's going to say hi to the council, and that's a wonderful thing, and we'll talk about this again because I love fireworks and I love celebration, I love this country, and I love to hear things go boom. I don't like fires, uncontrolled fires that is. So that's, that's my one public service announcement. Thank you all. Next up, we have item number five, the planning commission report. We have planning commissioner coming up here to talk to us.
Good evening, Mayor Nor, members of the council.
Good evening, sir.
We are continuing our review and preparation of the housing element portion of the general plan, and that's basically it. A nice slow day.
Okay, but a big project.
Yes, yes, and when it gets to you, I hope we've asked most of the questions, so you don't have to.
All right, thank you very much. Item number five, department reports.
We do have one, sir.
Chief Damon McMinn.
There we go. Thank you, sir. It's nice to be recognized. Or not. A couple of things. Actually, I'm gonna chime in on some things happening in Taft. Al Baldock, 2024 anniversary, his invitational golf tournament is Friday out of Buena Vista, which I am participating in. So if you get a chance, come out, say hi. If you have a chance to swing the sticks, bring him out. It's for a good cause, and he was a great coach. I met him several times. Again, thank you very much for the recognition of the dispatchers, because to our department, they mean a lot. I mean, more than most know. They provide the information, like I said earlier, to our troops out in the field, they keep us out of harm's way, they know when we're going into a bad spot, and they're very attentive to the radio. When we need help, they're on the spot, contacting backup and reaching out to other agencies. They do so much in our department, and it is the brain. As you walk in and you go into the communication center of our department, it filters everything out, everything starts there, and that's, those ladies are much appreciated. And now let's get into patrol statistics for the month of March. And for the month of March, our calls for service were 441. Our officer-initiated were 518. Traffic stops were up to 52. Total cases, reports written of 175. Our felony and misdemeanor totals were at 94, 71 misdemeanor arrests, and of course, due to Math 23 felony arrests. And I'm most proud of the total incidents of 959, when you start looking at the calls for service have been up a little bit in March, and then they, they stuck to it and were out there doing 518 stops for contacts, some kind of officer-initiated response to whatever that they saw when they were on patrol. So very proud of them, so appreciate it.
In spite of the busy, busy month with the 440-some-odd calls, they still were out in front with officer-initiated.
Still found time to get out there and take care of this.
They're doing the job. All right, thank you very much, and thanks to the troops. We appreciate you guys' contribution to the foundation of our safety and well-being.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, item number six, city manager statements. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. No statements tonight.
All right, thanks, sir. Item number seven, city attorney statements.
Thank you, Mayor. Awesome, sir.
All right, thank you. Item number eight, future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen?
I do have one request. I'd like to make a proclamation out for Brock McMurray. He's currently stepping down as president of the Taft College, and also he's currently our president of our Rotary Club. He's done a good job in the community, he's been around for a long time, and I think he's deserving a one.
All right, I would concur with that. All right, so what we need to do is we need to get with.
That's not a problem.
ASAP. Yes, ma'am. Any others, gentlemen?
None here.
None here.
All right. That brings us to consent calendar, items nine through 16. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll called vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on?
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name's Louis Lenny, I'm with TNT Fireworks, I'm here from Fresno. I saw on the agenda tonight that you are approving your, the annual event where you approve your fireworks permits, and it had been a long time since I'd been to Taft, I didn't have anything else on the schedule tonight, and I just wanted to come down and do something that probably doesn't happen for you folks. I would have said a lot, but after seeing this council, it's pretty friendly, but I just want to thank you, because we're all very well aware in the industry that the ability to sell fireworks, to fundraise through the sale of fireworks, is, is not a right, it's a privilege, and it's one that this city has recognized and allowed its nonprofits to do. For about as long as I've been in the fireworks business, which is now 45 years, there is a lot of hard work, blood, sweat, and tears that goes into all of the nonprofits out there. I see at least one person up there on the council that might have been around with me about 40 years ago and might have recognized some of the sweat that goes into, that these nonprofits do in order to fundraise through that. And again, I just came here, if you have any questions on fireworks in general, I'm more than happy to answer them, but thank you very much.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come down and thank us in person.
Lions Club, right?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm sitting out in the parking lot and I'm looking up your name and I thought, God, that's a chairman of a Lions Club from how long ago was it now?
Uh.
A season or two.
1978.
So it was a, was a few years ago, but the name just stuck in my, in my head, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming down, visiting with us. Okay. Items on the consent calendar are, item number nine, the minutes for the April 2nd, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 10, the payment of bills, some $500,000 plus. Item number 11, street closures for the 2024 Chamber of Commerce Car Show. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the city council of the city of Taft authorizing the street closures for the 2024 Chamber of Commerce Car Show, and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060C3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Item number 12 is the approval of special event permit for the Taft Chamber of Commerce to host the 16th Annual Rails to Trails Car Show on May 18th, 2024. Recommendation is a motion to approve a resolution entitled, a resolution of the city council of the city of Taft approving special event permit number 2024-0-
to Taft. I didn't have anything else on the schedule tonight, and I just wanted to come down and do something that probably doesn't happen for you folks. I would have said a lot, but after seeing this council, it's pretty friendly. But I just want to thank you, because we're all very well aware in the industry that the ability to sell fireworks, to fundraise through the sale of fireworks, is, is not a right, it's a privilege, and it's one that this city has recognized and allowed its nonprofits to do. For about as long as I've been in the fireworks business, which is now 45 years, there is a lot of hard work, blood, sweat, and tears that goes into all of the nonprofits out there. I see at least one person up there on the council that might have been around with me about 40 years ago, and might have recognized some of the sweat that goes into, that these nonprofits do in order to fundraise through that. And again, I just came here. If you have any questions on fireworks in general, I'm more than happy to answer them. But thank you very much.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come down and thank us in person.
Lions Club, right?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm sitting out in the parking lot, and I'm looking up your name, and I thought, God, that's a chairman of a Lions Club from how long ago was it now? A season or two?
1978.
So it was a, was a few years ago, but the name just stuck in my, in my head. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming down, visiting with us. Okay. Items on the consent calendar are, item number nine, the minutes for the April 2nd, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 10, the payment of bills, some $500,000-plus dollars. Item number 11, street closures for the 2024 Chamber of Commerce Car Show. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Authorizing the Street Closures for the 2024 Chamber of Commerce Car Show," and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines. Item number 12 is the approval of special event permit for the Taft Chamber of Commerce to host the 16th Annual Rails-to-Trails Car Show on May 18th, 2024. Recommendation is a motion to approve a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving Special Event Permit Number 2024-05, Authorizing the Taft Chamber of Commerce to Host the 16th Annual Rails-to-Trails Car Show Along the Trail Between Fourth and 10th Streets on Saturday, May the 18th, 2024." And find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15061(b)(3) of the SEQA Guidelines, and that the Chamber of Commerce will ensure pleasurable weather. I just threw that part in.
Thought that was the mayor's job.
No, the mayor takes...
Oh, there you go. That's what it was.
Item number 13, Award III Safe and Sane Firework Stands for the 4th of July, 2024. Recommendation here is a motion to Award III Safe and Sane Firework Stands for July 4th, 2023, that's actually 2024, to the Taft Motorcycle Club, Taft Sportsman's Club, and Westside Recreation and Park District, and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines. Item 14 is the monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number 21, March 2024. Recommendation is receive and file the monthly report for March 2024 from Kern County Fire Station Number 21, and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines. Item 15, Low Carbon Transit Operation Program, LCTOP, fiscal year 2023-2024, certifications and assurances and authorized agent forms for zero emission transit bus and related support infrastructure project. Recommendation here is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Authorizing the Execution of the Certifications and Assurances and Authorized Agent Forms for the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, LCTOP, fiscal year 2023-24, for the following project, purchase of a zero emission transit bus and related support infrastructure project using $25,017 in LCTOP funds, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15061(b)(3) of the SEQA Guidelines. And then lastly, item 16, consideration of one safe and sane fireworks stand for 4th of July, 2024. Recommendation is a motion to accept the late submission and award one safe and sane fireworks stand for July 4th, 2024, to Taft Baseball, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar? Hearing none. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items nine through 16.
Motion.
Second.
Good evening.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protam Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes, but I'd like to abstain from number 16, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Chivara?
Yes.
And Mayor Noor.
Yes. That passes on a 5-0 vote with Councilman, what's my, you don't like baseball?
No, I just don't want any reach of a conflict of interest.
I understand. Yes, sir. Thank you very much for being so transparent. All right. Next up, item number 17, mutual release and waiver with New Hope Temple Pentecostal Church of God in payment of $15,150. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Beginning in September of 2022, the City of Taft, as successor agency, the Taft Community Development Agency, and the New Hope Temple Pentecostal Church of God commenced negotiations for a potential sale of real property comprised of the southern half of the property referred to in the successor's parcel number 032-118-01, which is located between Fourth and Sixth Street, north of Front Street. As part of these negotiations, New Hope engaged Krazan and Associates, Inc., to conduct, to conduct site investigations, statistical analysis, and prepare a Phase II limited site assessment report. After Krazan conducted these studies, provided New Hope the Phase II report, New Hope determined the property was not suitable for its needs, and both the successor agency and New Hope agreed to terminate negotiations for the property. New Hope spent $15,150, this is the settlement amount, on the site investigation and preparation of a Phase II report, which has been provided to the successor agency and will be available for the successor agency's use in future sale or development of the property. New Hope and the successor agency now desire to end negotiations for the sale of property, with the successor agency releasing all claims related to the sale of property and site investigations. The city has prepared a mutual release and waiver to be signed by the city, the successor agency, New Hope, New Hope's affiliate, the Pentecostal Church of God Southern California District Incorporated, which is the New Hope parent. New Hope and the New Hope parent have signed the mutual release and waiver. The form, mutual release and waiver is included in the agenda and materials for tonight's meeting for your review.
Thank you, City Manager Jones. At this time, I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the mutual release and waiver, authorize the city manager to pay the settlement amount to New Hope, and find that the mutual release and waiver is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA Guidelines. So moved. Second. I have a motion and a second. Councilman Bryant, you had the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think it's important to, again, highlight what, what City Manager Jones mentioned about the, the exchange of documents, and that if and when the city does get to the point where we're trying to sell that property, those documents would, otherwise would have had to been procured at that time, and we're receiving those at this time in, in exchange for this release and payment. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam Cryer, any additional comment?
No, not, I don't. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yes, rather ironically, it's not going to get any cheaper, any further in the future. All right. Any more discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protam Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Chivara?
Yes.
And Mayor Noor.
Yes. Now passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you all. That concludes our open session portion of this evening's meeting. This council will be going into closed session for two items. Item A, conference with legal counsel existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9a, Taft Union High School versus City of Taft. Also, item B, conference with real property negotiator Craig Jones, City Manager, Government Code Section 54956.8, APN numbers 031-210-08, 031-080-04, 05, and 06. Thank you all for being a part of this evening's meeting. Have a nice evening.